I got a thing of Russ Antonoff's.
I know, I need to have to go on. I don't want to get food permit. That would be the only around. It's not worth it because we have to have a plan review like he told you for 200 bucks. And then maybe $4 we do something like that, but then to give it up to go. He goes, what if we have a rain out? You know, we run longer, we need to run. We can get two permits. So, yeah. He said, because I said, what if we go, you know, a couple extra days because of make up days or whatever. He was like, if you want to issue one, I said, okay, we're sure. Steve, you've got so many. But he's like, yeah, just call me up. I'll send you another permit.
Okay.
Yep.
So at least you know.
Yep.
And that way too. You know, nothing else.
Yeah. 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 So, you know, and even if I have a web page, it's for which it's still. You know, so, so whatever. That's how it was, you know.
But I listened.
Yep. And he said, again, he said, if I have any problems, if anybody comes and swishes it, just.
Yep. I kept, I kept that in mind.
Okay. Perfect. Good to know.
Did you see the, um, transcript that they're having download?
I like kids that have those turtles.
Is that right?
She literally holds my voice down.
Hey, I'm recording.
Seven o'clock, we call council meeting order, stands for flag elation. For which we need to signify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, call.
Michelle.
Ryan. Mark Krupser.
Ben Keel.
City Administrator, Fire Department, City Court, Miami, Madison, Ellen, Andrew, and Joe. And Justin King is engineer. With the approval of the agenda, action needed to attend.
With the addition?
With the addition of Parks Commission, Greater Minnesota Regional Parks Commission.
Um, under engineering, T E engineering.
Thanks. How may I motion approve the judge?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mark, second by Ben, approved by agenda. Johnson, I vote.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion very vital. Approval of the consent agenda.
Um, in your packet, you'll see a correct, a corrected copy of the minutes from May 12. Um, I had listed Michelle present and she was absent and that mean that if you. So, I put it up next year. How may I motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion by Michelle, second by Mark, approved consent agenda. And I vote aye. I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
John?
Mark.
Motion very vital. Reports, uh, city departments, commissions, and committees. City council, activity reports.
Uh, we need Zima too and thing. I attended the cleanup day, which I think was a pretty good success. Um, I was there for like three hours, lot of traffic coming through. A lot of work for people for the amnesty program. Um, do we get a final on that?
I think Anna's still putting it together. We're just now getting the bills, so.
Okay. Um, let's see, the Montrose Days meetings. Right in the.
I didn't visit the one, I was absent on the May, the one in May, or in June again. Um, I did, uh, go to the one here last, last night. And we excited to announce that they are going to have carnival and fireworks this year. Um, so pretty excited that they're going to be able to, to do both. Um, they're looking for pre-sale, um, wristbands. They're going to be $35 apiece. They're going to be good for maybe four hours on Friday from 6 to 10 P M unlimited rides. And then on Saturday from 12 to 4, Saturday 6 to 10, and then Sunday 2 to 6. So there's four time periods that for four hours each that there's unlimited rides. They're coming in with approximately, um, 10 rides that are going to be available for all various age groups. Um, they're going to have six to eight games, um, bringing in three concession trailers, um, snow cones, caramel apples, mini donuts, cotton candy, corn dogs, um, uh, foot long pot, uh, looks like foot long corn dogs, also popcorn. Um, the Montrose Days committee is going to be selling these wristbands through, um, they're going to be available at City Hall. Um, I believe the bank here in town and then at Montrose Family Chiropractic. I know those three and so they're, they're available. If we can get 72 of them sold, it's, you know, we're at a break even point for the, uh, for having the carnival. So I think that's pretty exciting.
I attended the Memorial Day. And it was a great turnout up there and everything. A lot of people, nice day for it. And the Schultz family will be going across it anymore for Memorial Day. Had to win it for 60 years. You got a plaque for it. So we're looking for somebody else who can fill in where it crosses.
Um, I also attended the community meeting and my understanding from Sheila Johnson is, uh, the Olmwood Gym was a really good turnout. They had, sometimes they had anywhere from 15 to 70 people up there. So I think for the first year, getting enough to go enough, it was a good turnout. Um, the classes that they do here in Montrose also, 10% of our residents are from Montrose that do the community. And which that's the, you know, they have 300 to 400, um, participants that do the different adult enrichment programs and English programs and stuff like that. 10% will come from Montrose, which is also pretty good, I think pretty good. I mean, it's 40 year old people, but not too bad. They're pretty excited about that. Um, and our safety training that Officer Johnson, Brian, right?
Brian Johnson.
Yep. Um, he came and gave us some safety information, you know, how to protect, you know, if you come into any kind of, um. Just safety precautions, safety precautions, you know, when you're out and up at City Hall, you know, things to look for. And I realized that I do a lot of things.
That was for city workers, things like one or two of them going to, uh, or two guys should be going into alone together to check out, um, water meter or something like that. Things to watch out for, that little meter in the back of your head is standing on end, backup. Common sense type stuff. We really appreciate the training. And I believe more than half, uh, city council was there, we split up into two segments. Again, thanks to, um, Sheriff's Department, Brian Johnson.
Anybody else with anything?
Uh, I noticed that there's no active report for Council Johnson. Is that just, uh, did that get omitted in the board? Is that?
I didn't have time sheet.
Oh, okay. Just didn't get it there. All right.
Fire department, daytime firefighters.
Uh, good evening, council. I'm here on behalf of Jason who's on vacation tonight. Um, we are currently accepting applications for daytime firefighters. We are, uh, very limited in our capacities during the daytime. Um, we're still able to serve and protect the citizens as necessary. However, it would just make, uh, life a lot easier and safer for us if we're able to get more people. Um, we're hoping to get some applications in by the end of the month and then we close it and then go through the interview and, uh, hiring process from that point on. Uh, depends how many people apply to how many people will take. We can take a maximum of four on right now though, to bring us up to full strength of 30 firefighters. Um, and that's all I have for that. The other thing that I just need to mention real quick is one of, uh, the wives, one of our firefighters nominated us for a, uh, Johnsonville Best of Us Award. Um, through that nomination and application process, um, supposedly thousands of fire departments, uh, have applied for it. We were, uh, listed in the top 20, um, fine lists. So now it's going on to a voting thing where, uh, members of the community and public go and vote for their favorite fire department out of those 20. Uh, the winner, the grand prize winner gets $10,000 and some fire safety materials and training materials. And then the next nine, um, place finishers get a thousand dollars and some training materials as well. So, um, we would support or we would, uh, wish that anybody in the community and stuff can get out and vote. You can vote once a day with every, you know, dress that you have, so.
Where do we go to vote?
Uh, the city Facebook page has a link to it. Um, our Facebook page has a link to it, or you can just Google Johnsonville Best of Us. And that will bring you to the site.
Kelly, how are the, uh, applications going?
I checked in the City Hall today and so far we have received no applications.
Is there anything that we can do to help?
Just, uh, get the word out that we're looking for daytime firefighters. Um, this is a common problem amongst all fire departments who operate like we do. Um, we've had good times, we've had bad times. Um, actually, when the economy is really bad and people are off work, that's when we get strength in our numbers. Um, but now that the economy is picking back up, um, people are going back to work, working longer hours. Nobody's around anymore. So, um, there's times where we're leaving station with three people, so right now.
As I see Quakeronia and Chaska and Norwood, New America, they'll have signs of daytime firefighters.
Yeah. And, and summertime is also our worst time because that's when the landscapers start going back to work. The lawn people go back to work, things like that. So it's just, uh, trying time here and keeps the few of us that are around during the daytime is a little bit busy here, so. Thank you, Kelly. Yep.
And how close are they even to town?
Um, we have a 10 minute response area and you have to reside in that area. Um, there are other departments and I would have to check with Jason, but I would be open to it. Who would, will take people who work in the community with us not having that big of a base of commercial and industrial. It's not that easy to, you know, pick from. However, Watertown, there's a guy in Elmo Fire who works for Watertown Public Works and he's also on Watertown Fire just for the daytime stuff. So we would be probably open to looking at that too, if somebody's able to be or come to a call and go back to work type thing.
That's pretty good. Just going to be able to be on a place like your place.
Yeah. So it, it would require some policy revisions or, you know, an exemption from the policy at that point. But I think it'd be something that we'd be willing to look into just to get some stronger numbers during the daytime, so.
One, uh, park recommendation.
Park met on Tuesday night, last Tuesday night, the third. We did have a forum, we only had two members present, so we really could not act on anything or, or do a whole lot. We did talk about the adopt a park program. We had kind of copied one from another city and we're just revising it to fit Montrose. And the, the, um, members that were there went through that adopt a park program and made the changes that they'd like to see. So I'm in the middle, I've got it just above done, middle of it. And I will, as soon as I get it all done, I'm going to email it out to them, have them look it over. They think it looks good, we'll bring it to the council meeting. It'll be for adopting a park, trail, or a garden, like a garden project I was talking about. And, um, along that line, Sue White told us that her son is interested in doing the, being the adopt a park person for this summer, since we don't have it out yet. He would, um, would like to volunteer to clean up the parks this summer for us as part of his, um, her college entrance, his community service, her college entrance. I don't know his name. I'll find out from her, but his name is, as we get, I think he was still in school, he was just finishing up. So she's going to get in touch with me. She also did some research on, um, the pros and cons of a dog park, but because there was nobody there, we really didn't discuss it. I handed out what was there and to everybody that was there and heard it, look at it on July. Fessin Hills Park light shone, it hasn't had a chance to have to look at it. So now when he gets back to her, Kim and I will be looking up the solar lights for the park. I also want to, um, thank Sue White for, she designed a flyer using our park brochure that we have and added the Spark Program and the school, um, the, pardon? The nature center of the school. She added that onto it and did a flyer, just a one-page flyer that the school sent out with all the kids before the last day of school to show them what there was to do over the summer. And it was really nice, so a thank you to her. And that was all we discussed except for National Night Out, so that's the, that's the part that's, I don't know if you have anything to add? Otherwise we can go on to National Night Out. Okay. And, um, out of the couple of people that were there, we talked about National Night Out, which is August 5th. And they are willing to, um, help with National Night Out. I checked with what was raised, um, last year in donations, what was left after the, um, National Night Out last year and what we budgeted for this year. There's about $764 there for, to use for National Night Out for this year. Um, so I contacted Joe at K R W C and we are on their schedule. They will be coming that night. They charge the $300 an hour, you'll be playing for the two hours. So that will be entertainment for all the kids because they do games and all the giveaways for all the kids. Um, we talked to the fire department, to Jason before he left and he's going to bring it up at their fire meeting when he gets back. And we're going to talk to Greg Finley in the morning about the Red County Sheriff's Department. And Sue also mentioned her brother, I think, or somebody she knows works for the bomb squad out of Bloomington. And if we're interested, they have a trailer that they bring out and you can tour it and it gives you all the information on how to be safe if there's any kind of a bomb scare, like the kids at school. And so if we're interested, um, she will work with me to get, and see if they can come out that night if they're free or not. So that's another option we have too. I'm going to contact, um, Casey's, their corporate office, and see if they're willing to donate anything this year. And I'll talk to, um, Casey's Jay at car station at the Montrose. And Sue, we checked with Sue the night of the park meeting and she checked with the supplier and she's pretty sure that we can get a keg of root beer from them, donate it to us for the root beer boat. And she also is going to, um, give a panel of ice cream and put it in their big walk-in cooler and see how long it takes for it, or how long it will stay not melted, so that it's not so hard to scoop. Because I know last year Sylvia tried using the soft serve machines, but they're kind of a pain in the, it sounded like. So we thought we'd go back to regular ice cream, but it's always so hard to scoop. Everybody gets bruises in their hands. So Sue was going to put it in her cooler and see if it would just get soft, but stay as ice cream, see what it would take.
Yeah, we tried to only use swans when it was so hard.
Yeah, remember that year?
And last year we used kems because we, the freezers that we give the boy scouts over there. They let us have to keep our freezers over there, so we can keep the ice cream in the freezers.
Was it easier to scoop then? Not so, was it hard, easier to scoop, not so hard in your hands?
No, no, no. It was nice then.
Okay. But she was going to check and see too, if it, if it was kept in the big walk-in coolers, if it would just stay, you know, just hardened up and not so hard that it was hard to scoop. So she was going to test it out and see. So I'll get in touch with Casey's and, um, Jay and I guess the, the occupier, um, she found one of their, one of their suppliers who donated a keg of the root beer. So I guess we just need to figure out how many people we think is coming, so we can contact, like, come and get them at office and the buns and stuff. I don't know how many. Last year I know was not good because of the storm, so.
Well, usually you can, you can, about 600. So we will have, um, tickets for them, for to interplay them, right?
So if we plan to buy 600?
Yes. That's what I would say.
Okay.
I know we had to score and stuff to come in, but.
So I don't know if there's anything else anybody can think of for National Night Out that we need to do. I'll, um, I'm going to get the permit, class is going forward with it. I'll pull the permit from the Department of Health for the park.
Do you have a concern about the whole parking direct thing? No form.
We have a decision. You could just ask the county decision.
I understand that. There's no warrant in it that there, there was, uh, what, last month, there was a cry that reinstated, uh, parking act during the summer because there was a lot of things that, that, um, they wanted to get into. And so is that a concern or is that?
I am.
Especially now with, I think we'll only have one meeting before National Night Out.
The only person I heard from that day was Sharon, that she would not be there. I didn't hear from anybody else, so I don't know why anyone's weren't there. Sylvia called you. I had a message I got back for the meeting, that Sylvia calls you and do something that makes. The other two I didn't hear from, so. We're going to contact, um, the Lions of Montrose Days and ask for their help. National Night Out. And if the council helps and staff helps, we should have enough people. That way we can switch off some ice cream. That's all I have unless anybody has questions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
And we've got Justin on Greater Minnesota Regional Parks Commission.
Yeah. Thank you, Mary. I just wanted to let you know that there is a new commission that's been established by the state legislature, uh, last year. It's called the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks Commission. And, uh, essentially what it is, is, um, it's a, a commission that is set up to establish a regional parks and trails plan for Greater Minnesota. And then the intent is from that plan, that plan will be used to, um, sort of guide or to select projects for the, for funding from the, the legacy amendment. There's a portion of the legacy amendment, I believe, that's going to be going towards this, uh, towards Greater Minnesota. And so the commission, this new commission that, that is elected to, to come up with this regional parks and trails plan for Greater Minnesota is, is sort of going to go statewide and, uh, it's split up into different districts. And then each, each district will submit a list of projects within the district. And then the commission as a whole will need to select which projects they feel statewide, um, are, are kind of ranked in order essentially. And we're going to find more information out at the meeting tomorrow. Uh, that's about the extent of the information I know right now. So Mark and I plan to attend that meeting tomorrow. My understanding is, um, uh, they're going to be looking for people to serve as a sort of advisory, um, group to each district, so they can do some of the, some of the lead work in getting together this list of projects. So that's one of the agendas for tomorrow. Then also, I believe they're, they're soliciting some information about potential projects. So we thought that would be a good time to, uh, start plugging the Montrose Regional Park for this. And, um, I don't know, it'll necessarily be a formal supplemental tomorrow, but it's just a initial, you know, letting them know that we have a, what we've been doing at Montrose here at our regional park. And I think the, um, the light work that we've done so far will, will greatly help that. Showing them that we have a plan in place, we have a, you know, master plan, um, the money that we spent so far today. You already have a plan in hand, um, so those will be key benefits to that. Now whether, uh, the big key is whether they'll see it as regionally significant. So like we need to find ways to, um, to show that it's being regionally significant as much as possible. I know it's, it's definitely regionally significant for Montrose, but if you look statewide or countywide, we need to find ways to try and pitch that as an official statement. So anyway, uh, like I said, we'll know more information after tomorrow night. It's kind of an information gathering session and also initial plug for, for the, for the Montrose Park. I think we're continuing to look for resources of funding for that as, as the city wants to move forward. And just in our day, we all, we are also working on the grading plan for that, uh, that was authorized. So we're, we're getting pretty close to having a draft grading plan done. And I'm hoping that here by the end of this month, then I'll, I'll have something ready to review with staff and, you know, just get the staff to review that, staff will, for the, great, you guys will review. That's my update.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you.
Okay. One whole business. Michelle.
Um, I just kind of brought this up, I think it was last month or eight, something. What's it, April? April. Um, that if we see, um, one of the one areas that we wanted to possibly, you know, attend or do, if it would be available, if somebody was to, to do that in fact, you know, but we didn't really decide on costing them. Obviously the three months, you know, and do it. If there's somewhere like $150, if there'll be councils to find that.
Do you have any examples of what those might be?
I haven't seen any since we left, so.
I've seen, I've seen a lot of the programs for the labor in some cities, but I haven't seen any like that.
seen any of that.
Yeah, I don't. So I just think we just.
We should wait till we get more information in there.
Yeah, that's all. There's really nothing here, so.
Okay. Move on to right county area.
And that question that, that are, bring that up earlier, are they tabled or just remove it from the agenda?
Yeah, remove it, that's fine.
Thank you.
Move on to the Wright County area, transportation, W C A T. We need a motion to point Mark and Barb as an alternate for W C A T.
Unless somebody else is actually interested in doing this. I have kind of been involved since the three of us went up to, I attended a few more meetings and that's now, but then give us the go-ahead to sit down as a group of cities with trail later and to start to negotiate.
I think the motion then to point Mark as the delegate and Barb as the alternate.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Michelle, I'll second by Ben. I vote aye, Mark. Michelle.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Those carry four of them. If I'm being asked. Move on to City Hall, we're in my.
As Mark, or as Mark brought up earlier, and I think Michelle mentioned it too, we had, we met with Sergeant Brian Johnson. He came in and did some safety training and he actually had been in City Hall previously, I want to say maybe last fall, and did a walkthrough and gave us some suggestions of how we could, what we could do at City Hall to make it a little safer. Because our City Hall, you come in the front door and the window is right there and Anna's like right, right beyond it. So he gave us a few suggestions and one of the suggestions was that we redo that front window area. His comment to us was that if it was somebody as agile as him, they could be in the front door and over the counter and standing in front of Anna in probably less than five seconds. So with that in mind, we made, I made a phone call to Ernst Construction and asked them to come out and look at City Hall and give us an estimate or a bid on what it would take to redo the front area. By that I mean just the counter area. So where that door is that comes directly in by Anna, we would take that door out, reconstruct the counter that's there and also extend the counter and make that section that's extended by the door a handicap accessible counter.
If you've been to Delano's, that's on Delano's, because they have one at Contra, regular Contra Payton and Drive.
Yeah, because ours is not handicap accessible. And it would, instead of having just the open window that we slide open and it's open, it would put in glass, that's considered a load resistant glass, but it would have the speaking where you talk through and it would have the counter that has the sliding area to slide the papers back and forth. The other thing I asked him to do was give us a bid on the front entrance door, mainly not anything to do with safety, but just because our front door is rusting away and you can look underneath it. So we tried to make it a little more energy efficient. We thought about putting in a new door and maybe put in a commercial, like a commercial live store, one that's got all the energy efficiency with it. And the last thing would be to insulate the north wall inside the building, that front part, the old part of the building. That north wall has no insulation, but we, a number of years ago, we had somebody come in and do a, we went through the whole building, did scan it for mold and different things.
Heat loss?
Heat loss, that whole wall was at loss. There's like no insulation in that wall. In the wintertime, Anna has to run two space heaters out there just to stay warm. So that was the other part of the bid. So with that, his bid that came back, the, the front window area to change all of that and make the handicap accessible counter and the new glass. Just so you know, even if we don't change that, we're probably going to have to put new glass in because the glass that's there is starting to actually like crumble away where we lock it. It's been there so long. So we're going to have to put new glass in, some, some kind of glass anyway. But the counter and the glass, the new counter top itself, taking out that door and everything was 11,45980. The front door was 3,850 and insulating wall was 3,23875. So I got the estimate and if you have any questions or if you need more.
The front door, would that be handicap accessible?
That door is, that area is handicap accessible. It's wide enough now for handicap accessibility. So just be, replace it that's there.
Yeah, put the button.
Yeah, would you have it wide enough there to come in?
I didn't, we didn't get a bid for that. I can get that now through Russ, the door guy, if we want to go that route.
I'd say go for.
I think that's a good, yeah.
Now we know what you can say, we could have a cap accessible building.
Yeah, put it right in there. Sure.
You think council is that there have been at least two employees that have expressed concern over some emails and some situations that have warranted that are asking Wright County come in and do a walkthrough and the safety training at, at their urgent, that they thought that that was the least that they could do. And so we are responsible for our employees, so to speak, as far as making sure that they're
So if you get, you want to wait and get another estimate then with that door thing or we just include that now in the estimate, whatever it costs, or the outside?
I'm not sure if Ernst would bid that or, probably have to go to a lot, probably like we use Russell, Russell's, it's called Russell Security from Buffalo for the door here, so we could get a bid from him for that and we could just do a separate bid on that.
We have to put the hardware in the top and then go with the wire to the outside and drill it in.
Yeah, so we'd have to get it from electrician and then from the door guy.
Did he do one, it's going to be?
Russ from Buffalo is going to do this part. I want to say it was right around, just a little over $4,000 for this, but these are double doors, so there's two openers here versus one.
Yeah, just for that button and that cover.
Like I said, there's, there will be two of them here, one on each side to open the double doors and then on the inside, so, and I, you know, that would be for the actual double opener, so. So then maybe like four, four here, so maybe half for City Hall.
Have we checked another company or have we? Are we still looking into the grants that are available?
I went online to the league and I couldn't find absolutely nothing again, so I emailed them and to see if they could give me the information, because I don't have that league bulletin and I couldn't find anything on their website anywhere that talked about grants for that. So I sent them an email and it's, it came back saying that they had received my email and they would give it back to me as soon as possible, so.
Just heard recent information, there had been a bulletin that the league sent, so I could probably get them in, when you check your emails. And I had been looking through there, we were looking, I was trying to help Naff and Art on, we were looking at something else for urgent management and I came across this. It was grants available for keeping employees' safety or safety work. So I thought that this, this may apply, so.
Hopefully I'll hear back from like tomorrow or Wednesday. Because if there's money there, we'll certainly apply for it.
I think we should open it up to another, good, and see if there's another company maybe that will also do it. And then wait and see if we hear from the grants or from the local cities on grants.
I will, if you know somebody, I don't know anybody else, that's why I, I don't know anybody that does commercial buildings like that. So if you know somebody, just give me a name. Because I can't, the bill, the bill inspectors won't give out names because they don't want to be responsible for anything. But if you know somebody, just send me an email and I'll stop there and run it, you know? Because I can get another bid, that's, I can easily get one. I just started here because I didn't know who else really to call.
So we just need to find somebody that does reconstruction and commercial buildings?
That's why, yeah, that's why I called these guys, because I know they do, virtually do a lot of Buffalo, City Hall and a lot of Wright County courthouse construction, that's why I called them.
I'm depending on.
Okay.
So you will, you will definitely contact information for, so you have the right?
When is the, there's a construction company now?
There's another construction company that we've used several times at work is Light Construction. Light, L I T.
I read it down here.
I'm sorry, I had it down. We've used them several times for different projects and we've done around crafts, so. And then the other one that I'm thinking of would be Random Construction, but I don't know if they get into much of remodeling versus, they're out of instead, you know.
Everyone's doing remodeling.
Yeah, I don't know if they do remodeling. I know they built, when we built our new building, they did that, so.
My other thought was when we had the water in here, there's somebody at the fire department, Matt Holmer, and I know he did some of the reconstruction for the water, but I don't know if they do actual reconstruction work or if that's just a.
I can get you his card.
Okay. So they can get hold of some of that.
Good.
All right. Maybe, yep. It's a place to start anyway.
Okay. Move on to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, Melissa.
Good evening. I have a lot of information here and so I will try not to take up too much time and ask any questions as I can, because I still don't have everything. I don't know everything about this yet. Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, there's a program that'll start in, by the state of Minnesota, for cities to become certified through an action plan and a specific process to support military members in their communities. This includes all military members, whether they're active, reserved, vets or even deceased, and to support not only them, but their families as well. As of right now, in the state of Minnesota, there are over 200 cities that are either certified or in the process of becoming certified, because it does take about nine, 12 months to complete the action plan and to be approved by the state. Right now, this is a program that is only done by the state of Minnesota, but the state is working to give this as a national program to roll out to the entire country to help support our military members in general through their communities, not necessarily as a government program. What this all includes is, there's so much to it. It is a committee, a steering committee is formed and that committee will meet at however often they set up. It is comprised of at least seven members in certain key areas and the committee head and those areas are. They are city leadership, so somebody from the city or the city council, public safety, a faith-based organization, a veterans organization, businesses or employers, social services and medical providers, and educators and youth organizations. And each of those key areas is responsible for coming up with part of the action plan, which would include how they can help support military members in our community. This action plan is then submitted to the state and will certify it. Once we're certified, we're able to use the logo, we're able to purchase signs for the city and also we are able to hold, even before that, we're able to hold events and fundraisers if we would like to. A lot of cities do get their organizations set up as a 501(c)(3), some don't, so it's not something that we have to do, but it is an option if we would like to work harder at this and get more involved in it. But what the program does is it identifies military members in the community and it also requires a large group of volunteers to learn about all different areas of the service. So that when these people come home or they move into our community, if they need something, they have some, a move to turn to. If they need more information about the VA or they need more information about tri-care or they need, just need help around their house, they can contact someone in the group and so they will point them in the right direction or help them directly.
Kind of a resource.
Yes, yep. But it's, it is, it's a resource and it's also to just make people more aware of what these people face when they come home. There is a lot of training involved and that is provided for us by the state. The program has people that will come out, they will offer training in all different areas. One specifically is they will work with emergency personnel to have specific training in case there is military-related issues such as, you know, suicide attempt or hostage situation. Because we all know that those are very real things that are happening in our communities. So our personnel will be trained in those specific areas to deal with those. They also just provide training in general, just information for people who maybe don't understand how it works or that just want to help out. So what I'm asking is for supporting the community to start to form an organization. And the next step after that would be to set a date for someone from the state to come out and they would conduct basically a community meeting and invite the whole community, anybody who's even potentially interested. And they would, it's about an hour and a half training and they would go through what the process entails and how this program works from here on out. So I'm not sure if that's something people would be interested in, but I think around here it would be very beneficial to a lot of people.
Once you contact the state and, you know, get a date set up, how would you then reach out to invite people?
They offer a brochure that we can, she didn't get a chance to send it over to me, but I believe it's on their website, that we can send out. We can also set up, this is something we can decide to do, we can set up a dedicated Facebook page and we can do a number of other advertising things to, to get this out to the community.
Melissa, when you say community, would you include like the townships, Waverly, or would you rather just try and restrict the two Montrose? What are your thoughts?
Yes and no. As of right now, I know Buffalo is already certified as a community. The Waverly and Howard Lake and I think a couple other communities out that way are already in the process. So if there's a community around us who is not doing that, most definitely.
I know Delano was not, or at least not on the list.
Yeah, if they're not on the, I think everybody that was listed on that list is in the process or already certified. So I mean, if there's, I mean, I think.
So then we would naturally fold in their V F Ws and our V F.
And then, and then some, we can do like a combined effort where we just contact Delano and say, hey, do you want to join this with us? And then the, you know, as we're forming the committee and we're contacting people who might be interested, include them in our calls or letters.
And you would do the same thing to the townships?
So that's the information that I know. You know, I do know that, you know, I'm sure a lot of people are aware, as of right now, there is a true drawdown, not necessarily just in Afghanistan, but in the military as a whole. And in this one branch of the service, they plan on eliminating 250,000 members of the service over the next three years. So all over the country, hundreds of thousands of military people coming home, moving. This is just a way to help support them. In a, in a better way and not necessarily through the government.
More for someone, people that have done multiple tours, that are, yep, I think it's a great idea. How many do you have on there as possible?
I don't. And when I, I did talk to the lady earlier today about the training and everything, and she said that, you know, especially Buffalo, since we have a school district or part of their school district, they would be very helpful in, you know, coming to some of our meetings and helping us get our action plan set up and things like that, so we do have resources as, not only, you know, with the elders and organization at the state level, but we're able to contact other cities for resources too if we have questions.
It's nice to know that they're going to be very hands-on with this kind of, because it's a speed.
Yes, and it's a very particular process, they have a lot of worksheets and they want a specific action plan about what we plan to do in each of those key areas and how we plan to continue to do that in the future.
I think it's a good idea, so if your next step is to contact the state and get something set up, would you keep us informed on that?
Well, actually, I did talk to her about that today. This was my thought, but I mean, it's completely big to you guys. The fourth Monday, when we normally would have a meeting, but sometimes there's not a lot going on, so it just gets canceled. She possibly would be able to do it in June, but she said the best date that she has open would be June or July 28th. I believe it's the fourth Monday in July, maybe at the regularly scheduled meeting time if there is no...
Is it the sixth?
Yes, yes. Which should have to take about an hour and a half.
So we're looking at either the 23rd of June?
Yes.
Or the 28th of June?
Yes, the 23rd was kind of a maybe for her because they are training, they have national march trips from North Dakota coming in, and they are going to be working with them to try and start a little bit in North Dakota too.
It does concern me a little bit too, that would only give us, well, less than two weeks.
Yeah, 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 but she said she was open on the 20th of July, that's a date that 20... It's interesting. Yeah.
My question is, so what are you expecting from the city?
The support, as of right now, that's the main thing, is that everyone's okay with that and, and what's, the next step would be to start to form a committee, and we would need to contact, you know, individuals in those key areas. So the only thing that I can think of that would need is maybe, you know, you might have access, you know, like, a list of businesses we can contact or the list of all the churches, just public information so that we can contact people and, and then maybe on to like the website, getting the meeting out through to you and things like that. So as of right now, monetary things, maybe in the future, depending on how that goes. Once, if we do become certified as a 501(c)(3), we can do fundraising things so we don't have to, you know, with money and that kind of stuff. Yep.
Now, this would be something like to help the troops when they come home if they got a mental problem or something like that?
Anything.
And to get, to socialize back in what they were in before they came to war?
It could be anything, you know, they work with, like, employment agencies to help them find work, you know, help them get back to school if that's what they want to do. One of their requirements that they have for the organization is every troop that comes home, we have to have a dedicated welcome home ceremony for them. So just supporting in any way that is a possibility, if we might.
Right now, a good lot of homes are taken.
Yep, yep, finding homes, finding, you know, jobs, helping them, you know, with food, with, with anything. You know, even if there's, you know, an elderly, you know, vet that might need help mowing his lawn, you know, if someone could just volunteer to go over and mow his lawn, I mean, even little things like that.
That's the way I locate it, I think it's a good idea, if you could get something going.
And that's why they like to have, they have the dedicated seven key areas so that we have all different perspectives to draw on, so when these people come to us, you know, we can point them in the right direction, because some, you know, they'll have, some areas will have more expertise, you know? If they're, you know, questioning, you know, a church thing, you know, we can point, you know, towards one of the churches or if they're looking for a job, we can, you know, point towards whoever's working in that area and the services that they provide and...
Council have consensus on that, that we're all, or I say before, I think, I need staff?
Just keep us informed then.
Yeah.
Okay, well then.
We're trying to help.
Yeah, so what I would, what I would like to do is start to contact people, you know? I don't know, go ahead and contact as many people as I can about their interest in the organization in those key areas. So the only thing I would ask is, you know, if you know of anybody who might be interested in those areas, or if you are anybody I can even call, that's just to get started, because she said it's nice to kind of have a committee formed before the meeting, so they, it's a little more community support than this is already kind of in place and...
Right. Did you say you have some brochures?
I have, I don't have, there's hundreds of pages you could print out.
Some stuff in the packet.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff on the website.
Yeah, and you can go to the website and it will list all the steps that you would need to take, the action plan, and actually, which is like, turns out pages where you can write in the action plan.
So, so they, that, there is a resource that for us to go and look at?
Yes.
Something to help you, to help us get a committee together?
Exactly.
Because right now, I need direction in that area as far as what exactly we're looking for, you know?
Yep, yep, so, so basically it would be, you know, for each area, so like the civic or the, the, the community area that's, but for the city leadership, so we would be looking for someone that, you know, either works in the city offices or that's part of the city council that would like to be a part of that committee. For the faith-based one, we'd be looking for a, a really deep-rooted member of a church or a pastor who would like to be a part of the committee. But it doesn't have to be limited to those seven members, that's just the minimum requirement, is that there's one in each of those areas. We could have as many on the committee as we want to, we can have community members. But then they like to have a strong volunteer base that we can refer them to or we can ask for help for someone else. So I'm hoping being on the committee and volunteering would be two separate areas, if that makes sense.
So many of them scheduled meetings for July 28th?
Okay, and she'll send them, and I will definitely get her a call tomorrow. And when she said when they come out, they'll bring a couple key leaders in certain areas so that we can explain more of the different areas too, so.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes, thank you.
You will be able to require as far as confirmation that they can achieve and get...
Yes. Yep, yep, and I mean, if I get any more information that I think might be helpful, I will just send it over, so. Thanks, Melissa. Thank you.
Okay, then move on to server backup replacement in Fort Worth City.
Our server is 10 years old, and we need to update it, we budgeted for it for part of it, because we've been backing up to Buffalo, and we aren't going to be able to do that any longer. And our onsite data broke, so we have a temporary system right now that we don't want to put any money into. Our server will no longer support the current programs and upgrades to our system, so we don't really have an option, we have to upgrade. By next year, it won't support even our current programs, although our new programs. So I asked Gordy Holman, who's the person we contracted to take care of our computers, to give me a quote on what it would take to update our server, transfer all the data, install it, as well as provide backup off-site at the wastewater treatment plant. And I believe what we're going to do is take our current server and move that to the wastewater treatment plant, and that will act as our backup, it's a brick building, so if there was a storm, it's unlikely that it would be damaged, City Hall would probably be damaged before that just because it's a wood structure, so we think that's a pretty safe option. If you have questions, I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability. I am totally counting on what Gordy told me, you know, a hundred percent I have to rely on his expertise and ability. I did ask him if he could come tonight, but he is unable to do that.
Do we right now have like battery backup to any of the stuff?
Yes, we do have battery backup.
Our server has battery backup. I think it holds for...
Six hours?
Or two hours, and then it shuts the system down so that it doesn't just crash.
Okay, okay. I, I just, just ask, because I know that they push us on, on what it works to.
Yeah, we have, yeah. Yeah, we have backup that holds it so long and then it actually powers it down.
So, like I said, right now, for the last 10 years or so, we've been backing up offsite to Buffalo, but it's getting too expensive, we have too much data to back up, so we need to do that ourselves, and so Gordy's thought was this page that, it's page 29, and he talks about that and actually using a Dell program to help us back up offsite. In addition to that, the server, the new server.
It's a program that actually, it's like, it just takes a snapshot of our server, so the server at City Hall, it would take a snapshot of that server and would actually email it to our server down at the plant, and that would be the complete backup, so if something happened to the one sitting at City Hall, we could pick that one up, bring it up, plug it in, and we'd be off to running. Enough to get, you know, backup where we need to be.
We don't, we, the other things we back up are laser feature, are all of our payroll, utility billing. We don't back up our Word documents or any of that email, it's, there's so much data. So we only back up what is under the necessity to keep the city moving ahead.
And that cost us $1,000?
$4,000, I think, isn't it?
For the server, for the backup server?
Yeah.
Just for them to implement it with the, yeah, I think it's like $5,400 and something?
$4,000 for the lease return, and then the total is $4,400, or $5,440.
That's how we understood it, plus the $15,000 for the new server.
Right. So if we're talking $20,000?
And that's what you need us to approve today?
One thing that could happen, like Barb mentioned, the server we have, because of its age, it'll support the programs we're using right now, the 2010, I believe, we used, yeah, 2010. If one of our computers goes down, the new programs that they now have, that the new computers come with, that you can't put 2010 on anymore, this server will not support it. So if my computer crashed tomorrow, our server won't support a new computer. So we would have to get some kind of an old computer, I mean, we'd have to pull up one of our old computers, put it in my office or whoever's, because the server won't support the new, whatever the new program is now that Windows is out with. And like you said, in 2015, it's, they're not even going to support the current ones that we have. This is, they're going, the service to roll to support it.
Just kind of, another question, have we put it out for a bad for another company? Or we just go with this company because we've been with them for so long?
Well, it's hard to find another local company, you know, we, we switched upon a computer many years ago. Part of that, we had a couple different companies, we found Holman to be very reliable. They service lots of other cities in our area, it's been very beneficial to us, we trust them, they know our operation. We're confident in their work. I don't really know another company, local company, that, that does that. They take care of Buffalo, Maple Plain, Maple Lake, I'm not sure who else.
That's why we were able to back up to the Buffalo bunker, because they service Buffalo. So we're able to back up to their bunker. I don't know how, if you can, I mean, you probably can bring in another company as far as the equipment itself, but as, to transfer all the data, you almost have to have somebody that knows all of your programming. You know, he knows, he knows all of our programming, like all of our Banyan programs and stuff, I don't know how you... It would probably take somebody else a lot longer as far as labor-wise, because they'd have to, unless they're familiar with it, but I don't know, like Barb said, I don't know anybody else that's familiar with it because everybody uses Holman.
A lot of this is quotes from Dell, so if we can go with the Dell server, I don't, and I'm not that familiar with other companies that, so.
What is budgeted for this?
I looked it up.
We budgeted $10,000, so we're $10,000 short, so we'll just do, we'll do a budget amendment from our cash balance and our general fund.
Well, I know Holman does it at work because we had our thing over to him, and he fixed it, and he'd done something on it and saved us a lot of money on updating.
So, yeah, we have, I mean, we have a network of 10 computers, and they take care of all of them and take care of our system. They help us set it up, when, when they came to Montrose, they did a lot of labor for us to get our, to get our system all up and networked and updated. I think they've put together a sound program for us, they come in once a month and do all of our maintenance, and they've been very reliable. We have, we purchased our first server from them, they installed it.
We've had it 10 years, I believe, so, we've done our money out of it.
I, I know when you call and they get back to you in a time of fashion also.
And there are times, yes.
So they, they quote, do our computers at work, did the networking and a lot of work there. And I love that you call and you get answers, so we've dealt with quite a few other more fly-by-the-night computer businesses, yes, they may be cheaper, but it costs you more in the end, so.
Well, because they, they take care of other communities, they're very familiar with the needs of a government agency, which not everybody is, so I think that's a real value, and like Wendy said, they know our utility software program, and they work with Banyan and War, that's our accounting program, they work with that in other cities, they know the people at the other end with the phone when there's a problem, they know, they work with laser feature, our, our storage system, they know, you know, so they are very familiar with the software we use and I think just their expertise in that field saves us a lot of money, and certainly a lot of editing over time, dealing with some of those little idiosyncrasies of computers that happen now and again.
That would take them 34 hours, part of it.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Just in.
Yep. Transfer all of our data from the old server to the new server, set it up. They'll do a lot of it in their shop, and then I'm sure they'll spend at least a day, maybe two days at City Hall and at the wastewater treatment plant. One of the things we're going to try to do is tie those wastewater treatment plant computers into our system. Right now, they are not backed up on our server, we're going to try to back them up at the server at that location.
So would we need a two-part motion now, as far as the machine part of it, or $15,000, and the, the second part would be a head-up, okay?
I think there could be one motion. I think there could be one motion.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the proposed bid here from Palman to update our server. So we have a new server at City Hall and then a remote server located at the wastewater treatment plant.
Motion by Ben, second by Mark to update our computer system with Palman Computer Service. Mark, I vote.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried by. Now, we move on to the community center reconstruction.
Last summer, we talked about the flooring in the community center. The last time we had it stripped and waxed, which has been probably a year and a half or more. The guy that strips and waxes floors told us that we should not think of replacing it because it does not compete anymore when he strips and waxes it. So even though he goes down, you know, takes all the wax off and scrubbed it, it still looks like it's dirty in the main part out here. And you can tell the difference between the sections here. And so I got some quotes and we didn't do anything last summer, so I got some updated quotes from both Gelbergs and Neil's Flooring out of Buffalo. The three quotes that I got are to replace the floor with VCT tile, which is what's in here now. So we would just get new, new VCT tile. The second quote I got on there is to replace it with what's called LVT, which is a no-wax tile. And the third quote is to put the carpet squares in this part of the room, in that corner area over there, like from that door or that wall that juts out over to the window, they would make like an area for a dance floor. And then the kitchen and the storage room, they would put the VCT tile. That's the third quote on here. So I guess we need to discuss that tonight. The floor does not need to be replaced because of any moisture problems or anything, which I've heard that's not true. There is not a moisture problem on the floor. The problem is we can't lay it over this tile. It has to be taken out because in these spots where it's showing black marks or brown marks between the tiles, that means that moisture gets down in there when we scrub the floor. When it's laying on cement, so when the temperature changes, there could get moisture under it. If we put the new flooring right over the top of this, what will happen is it will, the glue will seal it. The new stuff will go on top of it and that moisture, if there is any moisture in there, will make all the bottom tiles let loose and you'll be picking up your new floor right off because the old stuff will let loose. So the new stuff, the old stuff has to come out in order to put new down. So there's, that's, but the reason we looked at the bids is because the floor is just, I mean, if you look out here, you can see where there's any bumps in the cement because of the cement flooring, after a while the cement kind of starts getting, let, you know, gets bumpy, so they would patch all that. But it just, it's twenty years old. The building was built in nineteen ninety-four or five. It's been here twenty years. What we've done in the past is we, twice a year, have it stripped and waxed and that worked really good. But after twenty years, it's just worn out. My opinion, I really, I guess it doesn't matter to me what goes in here. If you want to go back with what's in here, we'll have, we'll pick a nice color, put it back in here. We have a scrubber that takes care of it, that'll have it stripped and waxed twice a year.
What does that cost then?
Somewhere between twelve hundred and fifteen hundred. Now, like I said, I haven't had it done for about a year and a half, so he might have gone up. He was right around twelve hundred, I think.
Because I, I just had him come in and quote us, we're about six thousand square feet. He built, bid us at about seventeen hundred to two thousand, right?
So they're probably still around, maybe it'd be about twelve hundred still, which is not bad.
That would be my guess is right around the twelve.
And that's, that's a pretty good price.
So, but with the no-wax floor, we wouldn't need to do that, just scrub it just for a second?
Right, but I, getting back to the no-wax, now Neil seemed to think that would be a good thing to put in, but Gelbergs does not. Because the problem is, is the tables and the chairs, when we rent the building, we're not here to tell people how to move them. And you can tell them many times to make sure, I mean, there are signs on the door that say use the chair carts. People still stack them ten, fifteen high and then drag them. If you cut into that, that coating or that wax, we have nothing, no way of repairing it. So now I don't know, you end up having to replace that tile. So I, you know, I don't know that the no-wax, as far as not having to pay for stripping and waxing would be great, but I don't know that would be that good in a place that gets...
For, for how long?
Or for how long, they, you know, they, he sent me some warranties on it.
High heels.
Yeah, or from, I asked him for some information like on warranties or what they guaranteed. And one of the things with the no-wax was, you know, it talks about they won't back it if someone's walked on with high heels or anything.
Oh, really?
Dropping anything across it because that's not considered normal wear here, so.
The eight thousand dollars more for the LVT, that would, in the savings if you want the VCT, we could strip and wax it for three years.
Yeah.
Twice a year.
They have in here, it says indentation from improper loading, including high heels, spike shoes, rolling loads, chairs or other furniture. So I don't, I don't know that I would...
Voice warning?
No, not at all.
Well, and the other thing that I think I want everybody to know is that over the last twenty years, we put aside money for the maintenance of the building. You know, so this is, there's money there just to take care of these general maintenance items, new floors, painting, you know, updates. So that's why we have this reserve, just to take care of the facility.
All we've really done in here, I mean, like I said, we've had the floor stripped and waxed twice a year. Beyond that, we had it painted in two thousand six, so it has not been painted since two thousand six, other than just normal cleaning. So I think after twenty years, it's, needs a little bit of a facelift. I think it's time we, especially, you know, in order to continue renting it out. We don't make a fortune off renting it out, but we make on the average about three thousand dollars a year renting it. If we've had, we've made as high sometimes as five thousand. So I think if we, if we spruce it up a little bit and, you know, get back to renting it out, helps a little.
The other thing, Constance, I have to throw this out there, but in the other community centers, BMWs, conference rooms that are carpeted or they have a carpet mainly and then there's a dance floor, you know, at the time. And they just look classy. They're, they look, the sound is better than it is. But I seem to be a minority of that for people that I talk to, but I think it looks good. The thing of it is too, is that Wendy said that they, both these bids for the tile and the carpet, they already figured extra carpet squares and, you know, twenty-four by twenty-four or the tile pieces. Like when you do a roof, you save the extra shingles.
I also think it was their recommendation, both Neil and Gelbergs, that we go with the carpeting.
They both thought that was, yeah, they both thought it would make it quieter in here and a warmer feeling, but...
The flip side of that point is that we would have to buy equipment like vacuum cleaner that would, you know, comes along here with a fifty-inch white hoover. We'd have to get something as big as our floor sweeper or our scrubber right now that would do quick work of this thing. Then we would also need to have...
I would have, have shampooed every, or have a shampooer. I did talk to somebody that works at the Buffalo Off Sale Liquor and they have carpet in theirs. But they haven't, they haven't shampooed quite often, like every couple of months probably. Now she said they just dropped a bottle of red wine on it last week and they, it had just been shampooed. But they talked to somebody and they said, just soak it up as much as you can, keep it wet. So get it wet, place something over it so it stays wet. And they came in the next day and they stayed, there's no stain, it's gone. So whatever they did, now, I don't know who they used for shampooing or anything like that, but they do have it shampooed a couple of times a year. But they said that that's been in there for about a year and a half and it looks slightly red now still. So, you know, there's a lot of traffic in there.
Got a question here?
No, just a comment. When I was teaching in Watertown, all the classrooms were carpeted and I had no idea what kind of carpeting was in there. But they only shampooed them once a year in the summer. They did have a machine if, you know, if there was some kind of spill on the carpet or something.
So it's fine.
They could come in and clean that up really fast.
But it seemed to hold up though.
That building opened in ninety-two and I think they replaced the carpet about five years ago. I think fifteen years. And then, then they put new and painted. I mean, they just wanted to perfectly spruce it up again. So you might want to call a school to see what kind of carpet, and probably they would know.
These would be the carpet tiles, right?
Yeah, is that, I was going to ask you, is that carpet tile they use in the school or just the...
No, it was roll carpet there, yeah. But each room had a sink and there was an area that was tiled near that, near the sink. But there were not, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be food. Like there would be in here, in the classroom, there was not, that food was not an issue.
And I know that's been some concern, which the carpet is, but then the food that's served in here, so.
I think with the carpeting, when you have the tiles that's in here for a couple of years or so, it can spill. And you can replace that section or that's going to look different than the stuff that they have to wear on for two, three years.
And talking with different people from the different groups and organizations, if, if we do do the improvements, are looking at tile, not carpeting? So, and I, I was, I was misunderstood, I guess. I was thinking moisture underneath, not for like cleaning the floors to change the cracks, so.
Now, because it lays on cement, so with the change in the temperature, it'll get some moisture, but it's not the only thing, water and...
So organizations that use this building or organizations that just have a concern about Montrose?
I don't know what it costs when the building was built. I have no idea what it costs for the flooring, but if we went with VCT tile, I think if, if we spent fourteen thousand dollars now on a new flooring and it lasts almost twenty years like this one has, I think it's well worth it though. I mean, no matter what we put in here, in the last twenty years, it's gotten its money's worth.
The other concern that I was getting was, again, if we open it for bids for anybody locally.
There's no, there's no local business that we're aware of.
Because, I mean, there has to be somebody that's insured and, I mean, where do they get their products from outside of these guys there?
There could just be a carpet guy from one town. How he did some carpeting.
Yes, Leon, Leon doesn't do carpeting.
And the guy that was in Waverly was down to North.
Waverly Flooring.
But the last I heard, they were working out.
There's a couple.
I mean, because they did, Waverly did our, our carpeting at City Hall.
Because I know that there's a couple people here in town that do do flooring, tile and carpeting. So, and that was just putting it out on social media.
I guess if they're interested and they wanted to come give us a bid, but they have to pay, I mean, they have to prove that they're insured. I know these guys are insured and...
Right, right.
And Gelbergs, I mean, they're both pretty reputable, they've been around forever, so.
Yeah, so in three years, if we have a problem...
Neil's been doing this, Gelbergs, I've heard definitely.
I'm guessing Neil's been there...
Well, he's been there twenty years. He's right on fifty-five, just west of the Highway twenty-five, fifty-five intersection.
He's now in the, right, his business now is in where the old Buffalo Batuminous used, no, cement company used to be or something. But he, he was in business before he moved there even. He was in another building. And then went there because of more space. So he's been around a long time.
Could you say, Wendy, why they were leaning towards, both of them, you said were leaning towards the carpeting also? What was their reasoning for that?
Because it's, makes it like a softer, it's quieter, you know, get the echo down here and just, it presses it up. You know, if you're using it a lot for banquets or for wedding receptions and stuff, a lot of people like the carpet. It just is a nicer look to it.
But like you talked with the tile, the no-wax tile, the people that, you know, stack the chairs twenty high and pull them, who's to say they're not going to do that carpet?
I don't want them to be able to. I don't, I don't want them to be able to.
Be surprised, you know, with, you know. I mean, who's to say that that's not going to happen with carpet too, so.
There's pros and cons on all of them, I mean, I, I said, I, I just, it doesn't matter to me if you go with the VCT or the carpet. I think the carpet would be, is really nice, but the VCT, if we get the VCT or something, it looks clean. I mean, it just, it just looks dirty now because it just won't, it doesn't come clean anymore. It's almost like when you get done waxing it, you can see the dirt under the wax.
You know, then you got your scrubber and then you got the most of the dirt scrubber and picking up all the water when you are going over the spots you're at, the water sitting there, you got to go back over it. Well, they, we put that in the top.
They don't even call that. And we've got a big, there's a chip out of a piece right over here. There's some that are ragged. They say it's just, it's worn out. There's about forty-three thousand dollars in our community center reserve fund that has been built up over the course of the twenty years that the building has been here. So there's money there, like Barb said, to do the improvements.
So what about the painting?
Well, the painting is another thing that's with Fred and Actiborn. He would come in and paint page thirty-four, forty-three.
So we can stay well with...
Oh, yeah, I can't hear. Oh, yeah, glasses on, wait, yeah. He, he would come in and paint the entrance, the main area, the bathrooms and the kitchen area. A little bit of the kitchen, we painted. And that's taking all these pictures down, we won't put them back up and then patching all the holes from where the pictures were and doing any other patching that needs to be done. And he still, he painted it in two thousand six, so he still has the color scheme, the numbers. It's like a light gray, so if we did that...
I think that's kind of faded. Yeah, it's kind of faded.
But if we did like a light gray again and then put in, if we did the tile, if you went with the tile or carpet, whichever, put in some kind of a gray tone to it, it'd be nice. And he does a good job painting it. When he painted it in two thousand six, he did a really good job. And he'll do it for thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. That's everything.
Yeah, thirteen fifty.
And he comes in, I think he has somebody else, I think he just does it himself.
Did he just do the mirror, Buffalo?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I agree that it does need a facelift, but, and I understand what you're saying about Gelbergs or Neil's or whatever, but I think we can possibly try to, for somebody local, and see what they can come up with. Who would that be?
Kind of say, make some suggestions, because nobody, they don't register with us when they have to bring a business in town.
Business listed for flooring.
Right, they don't tag anybody that, I mean, I know nobody in town that does flooring, so.
I just got a name, Jesse Carosa, I think his name is.
Does he have a business or does he work for somebody?
He works for somebody. It's not the business, I don't think, because he's in town, but his, the company he works for would be interesting. I think that's the name. I can't be positive, I can't be a bad service. But I know that, like I said, discussing this... But I know that, um, like you said, discussing this with, um, even I have never talked about being able to possibly find somebody that can do it cheaper than this, so... I mean, those that have asked, I guess...
It's that I don't know anybody in town, so if somebody has a name, I guess, I just knew these two companies.
I would suggest, if we do table it, that, um, take a week and come up with these, the names of these other companies.
And investigate where they're from, what they do.
And then, um, next council meeting, yeah, you know, not, not wait to have another name, you know, at the next council meeting, because...
No, if you can give me a name of somebody, I can have them come on, give me bids.
Okay.
So, I'll just give names, I guess.
Oh, I can do these, um, what's from Neil and Jelber's.
Well, this is roughly the same quote that you gave us a year ago, because they're pretty close.
Jelber's, twenty years dated six twenty-seven thirteen, so...
Yeah, someone will learn the same as what they had.
Usually have a big...
What else did I do, Neil? Hey, I didn't say anything, I can just email, they didn't say that they expired at a certain time, so, I think we can go another one. If you can give me a name, I can call and see if they like giving a bid.
Okay.
So, do you, I can do that, what about the painting, you wanna, you wanna go ahead with the painting, that we can get in starting?
Before you put the tile in?
Yeah, we'd like the painting, go with the flooring.
Yeah.
So, so you're okay?
We're gonna have a splash.
So, you're okay to go ahead with one name on the painting, but you want more names for the carpeting and the, or the tile?
We can open it all up.
We can open, yeah, if you want to, we can open it up.
I honestly can't believe you'd give anybody the paint unless...
No, you just tell me, yeah, that's okay.
No, I get it. I, I can't imagine nobody less than thirteen hundred and fifty dollars for paint, and that includes...
Well, especially, we know the quality of the work he does, and he's insured.
And it includes the paint and the patching.
Do we use a special paint, because of the humidity and stuff?
No, it's just the same. There's not showers or anything in there, so...
And he's the one, he's the gentleman that painted before.
He painted in two thousand and six.
And we're gonna keep it bright?
Yep. Neutral color.
Yeah. I, if, if you wanna open it up, you know, all of it, that's fine.
I think if you just put us behind, you wanna do it all?
Go ahead with the painting?
I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion right now for Fred to come in and paint for thirteen fifty, I mean, that, it seems very reasonable to me, and, you know, I mean, just get it in, done and over with, I mean, so I'll make a motion for Fred to, uh, come in and paint, um, from his proposal here, send to you, maybe, at one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to, uh, patch, say, fill the holes, paint same color that he did in oh-six.
I'll say. Motion by Ben, seconded by Lloyd, for Fred McAdore to come in and paint two old walls for a price of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Lloyd, Lloyd.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Lloyd, Mark?
Aye.
Motion carried by the...
On the way to the line, Steve, what's that?
What's that, what, uh, Sean, it's true, what's gonna do?
Yeah, I think what was approved last year was to put seven feet of concrete along the north side of the building, and as we talk about that, we, we just pictured how ugly that is.
I'd like that Sean was gonna help do that.
Well, the, the first phase of that was to put on a, a...
Beef trough.
Beef trough.
That got put on.
Yeah.
And that, did that, I think that that cured some of the water problems out there that was causing the water, you know, so, and, and I don't remember, help me out, was that like a two-part thing that we, we would act at first?
They were gonna do it, and then something else come up in the city, with Highway twelve, redeveloping, with the planning on Highway twelve and everything, you wanna, and get that done before it throws up, so we're...
This kind of got put on hold.
And that got put on hold out there.
Right.
The only reason, or something like that, so the kids, which, some of the rocks had to fire them to build out there, that's gonna have to be repainted again because of terrible rock, all that, everything. That's the only reason they got put on hold, and put the planning on Highway twelve before it throws up out there.
Right, that's right.
And one time we talked about doing like a cement all the way from the building to the sidewalk, and putting a, like a table out there, a patio, like a little cement picking table type things, and putting a grates around the trees, decorating the trees that are out there, because when they used to have a tent on that side of Montrose Days, it turned into a, what, a...
Lot of that.
Out there, because everybody walking back and forth through there, but now that they moved the tent to the side, it doesn't get the traffic, but the seven feet of cement coming out from the building, like Barb said, would look kind of, it would, it just wouldn't look right.
Well, I wouldn't see no problem if that was cemented all the way out there to the curb and gutter now, and then trees were left there for decorating.
The trees would stay there.
Would make it look nice.
Yeah.
But then, when are they gonna, they ever gonna redo that going out there, Barb? Fix that, or get down to the level where it's supposed to be?
I, that was done in ninety-three, and I haven't, the county has never contacted us on that.
Because we've got all that cement cracking, and, and we've got all that cement cracking in front of the fire barn over there, and when they back one of the trucks, or two of the trucks, and the back bumpers are dragging on that cement, and it's just wrecking the bumpers on the back of the fire trucks, and it just keeps cracking and going down more and more, and the storm sort of runs along the road there.
Yeah, somebody from the county engineering department could come up and look at it.
Because even over in front of the shop over there, when you get a lot of rain, you got water going in the doors of the shop over there, where the workers are at, and they're always standing in water all the time, that road should be brought down, and where it should be minimal, which are brown on it, where you ain't got all that water running around all over.
We can contact the county engineers department, ask them to come up and look at it.
I appreciate it, that's where the fire department would do, because sometimes they got the brick and trucks in the back part over here, so they ain't dragging coming in the, bringing them in.
One thing we talked about with the landscaping, um, instead of putting that seven-foot slab of cement out there, Sean thought maybe we could just take the rocks out of there and put in some kind of shrubs that shade droves, yeah, like a shade shrub, shrub, on that, on the north side of the building, and we can eliminate the rocks, and, because like you said, the needs are there now, but it doesn't get all muddy out there, that would get rid of the rocks that would, you know, have something right along the building, and they could just mow and trim and do whatever we would have to have.
We'd have to have that.
If nothing else, we could put a little bit of mulch under them, and they can go up to it, and we got, so, but he didn't want to, because the motion was made to do the cement, he didn't want to go ahead and do it unless that motion, unless something else is done, maybe they rescinded or a different motion is made, and Sean couldn't be here tonight, so, I don't know, if you wanna wait until he gets back to talk to him, or...
Well, if we don't want to disrupt and took the rocks and everything out of there and put them all on, I think we'd look pretty on that side of the building, because it wouldn't be muddy now, being that the beef trough got planted, what about Lloyd, Greg, and Bud in?
Lloyd, Barb, Michelle, we've all been on to Annandale, and do you remember that the green space that they got from the toll home company? And they sold, and they sell papers and people that can buy a different size papers for a set of all the money, and they can advertise their business, or they can memorialize somebody, and, and, and that, that green space there is, is basically the same size, and I just wonder if we don't have an opportunity here that we couldn't put this cement thing on hold, and just think about that for a minute, and, and we've got some people, um, the gentleman with the, uh, Highway twelve project, that, that is a landscaper.
Graham Somers.
Graham, that, that we could maybe just ask if he's interested in giving us his opinion about something like that, and even take a field trip if we need to.
That's a good idea.
I just have a fight that I'm sure today, I'm, the, 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 right?
Yeah. I mean, it, it, it's an opportunity that if we could, that, that money could go towards the community center, it could go towards, uh, whatever, whatever we decide, I guess, you know, but, you know, I think it's an opportunity to use, to make a green space that could be a potential income generator, you know.
What did we ever decide about the kitchen?
Perhaps anything.
How to do anything?
So, we'll put that on hold then, for the north side of the building.
We'll see if I can get some information together on the papers, and we'll tell Sean to hold up on the cement on the side there. All right.
Okay, and any other business to bring up?
Are we going to meet, um, the fourth Monday? We have business to discuss that night?
I love painting and carpeting, right? We have a portion of the paint, right?
Painting is done.
Yeah, yeah, the painting.
Carpet and, for the time.
Do you, do you wanna go first, or do you just go down it, or I?
Probably talk about that in July.
I'd...
Don't think it's that pressing.
What time did you potentially have blocked off Monday?
I have, I have not really blocked much of anything off, there is some openings in July, only because with, when we were having the stuff with the kitchen, I did paint reservations.
Great.
But I think when they talked about this, it was, I like, I, in a week, it would be all done, so, anytime it was a free week, I think, you know, we can book them, you know, probably if we let them know a month in advance, because I'm guessing a lot of them aren't gonna be able to get in, you know, for a few weeks anyway, I know a lot of them are busy. My mom, my parents called about some carpet in their basement that got wet, and all of them they called, we're two and three weeks out, so, I, I don't think if we, if we can get another bid, if you give me a name and I can get another bid, we can do it at the July meeting.
So, then, yeah, I say, what's Monday meeting on the twenty-third?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see what we need to.
So, I am, post that meeting is canceled for June twenty-third, is that agreeable by consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, the acknowledgements, have you got anything?
I'd like to acknowledge the Schultz family for setting up for Memorial Day, Brian Johnson for the safety training for the city staff and employees, Sue White, the five for the school kids, and Melissa Goodwin again, for the, uh, Montrose Day beyond the yellow ribbon, so, thank you.
Um, I don't know if you guys did this at the last meeting, but, uh, acknowledge the Public Works for, um, in that day, the fire department, for being acknowledged through the life of the firemen, um...
And hope we can find some firemen to volunteer for days, add that word up.
No, I'm not, I'm physically able to be a firefighter. Two old men.
And why do that, huh?
Uh, right now, we've got enough stuff going on.
You're not getting here to tell, right now?
Getting on, uh, leaving work with, uh, common meetings, uh, issues with work right now, that I'm not there as much as I'd like to be.
Maybe we can see some of our city workers who'd be interested, they got the white home, you know?
I, I, we're gonna work out for that. Kevin, are you gonna work on, um, our, our changes to our policy that, that we might need?
I can see what other cities do and stuff, do that, it, it becomes a little bit of a gray area as far as, well, are they still gonna get paid for working for the city?
Yeah.
And are they also gonna get paid on the fire department side, and are they gonna get paid from the city to attend our trainings type thing, so, I mean, there's a lot of juggling that has to happen.
Yep.
Well, your other thing is too, um, if they're only here for daytime calls, they're not gonna meet their requirement for their pension, for their firefighter pension, so I don't know how that would...
Yeah, I'd have to look and see where it all kind of comes in, because a lot of the guys that I know that work for Public Works and are on fire, or on the fire department in another city where they live already, so, it's hard to look into, I think, okay?
So, motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn. I'll second that motion to adjourn, motion by Laura, seconded by Ben, to adjourn. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carried by, thank you, everybody, for coming.